So if you're looking at a lot of the roots to our founders, we're getting information in terms of designing our government.
Early run.
That was a nugget.
Early run.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on August 28, 2015.
So move second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Abstain.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on September 1, 2015.
So move second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on September 3, 2015.
So move second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Good to see you.
Ah, aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on September 15, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
May I get a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Abstain.
Financials are coming way down.
Oh, yeah.
There's reason for that. I am not used to that.
Heidi needs more time.
Yeah. Heidi likes saying hi.
She wants to sit there.
You're going to roll me off, Heidi. Are you ready? Are we still signing?
Oh, yeah, we're ready.
Well, first off, thanks a lot for getting me on the agenda. We kind of got in there at the end, so really appreciate you making room for us. What we're asking today is approval to enter in a contract with Millstone Management Group to do some work at our adult facilities building, some trim work, and we have an entryway. They've been deteriorating for several years. They've been on the to-do project. We were going to take the trim off, but we found out when we did a sample board that there's unfinished brick on there. Actually, it's like block, so we've got to cover it up. We're getting some seepage in there and getting water into the block and kind of some damage on the inside. Also, the entryway, that's original to the little one, about 25 years old, is falling apart, basically. We've had some issues, almost it seems like with all of our doors. I don't know if it's because of the weather of the last couple of years, but we've had some heaving and stuff like that, so we've had some safety issues. So that's what this project is, to do that entryway and trim work.
The Board of Developmental Disabilities is requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreed between the Jock County Board of Commissioners and Jock County Board of Developmental Disabilities and Millstone Management Group Incorporated to perform all services necessary for the Methan Mountain Center Adult Services Building entrance and exterior trim work project in an amount now to exceed $46,490.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Abstain.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool? Uh, yeah, you see this? Do I have to focus?
Yes. Screw me with the, uh...
Uh, yes.
You're not understanding what's going on. I'm fine. I found out after the fact, so in the future.
The other one is on number six, is also uncorrected.
They're playing with me. And as per six, do we just need to do a read on that, or do we need to talk about that?
Just allow them to start working. Notice of commencement, or notice to proceed.
The Board of Developmental Disabilities is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice of commencement, AKA to proceed to Millstone Management Group Incorporated for the Methan Mountain Center Adult Services Building Entrance and Exterior Trimwork Project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Abstain.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
All right, thank you very much.
Nice day.
We have another meeting at 9:30, so I apologize for having to leave. But thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Bye-bye now.
Is this somebody from the probate court here? Apparently not. Kimberly Laurie came yesterday and spoke with Commissioner Claypool and Heidi and myself and explained that they are reconfiguring their reclaim grant and putting some activities in there that have been paid for on the general fund. It's not a good thing, the program, some other probation activities. So this document is just to allow for the commissioners to approve that application for this grant and to use the money as has been laid out in the grant document. Any questions?
Do you feel comfortable with everything?
The Probate General Court is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the fiscal year 2016 reclaim grant amendment attachment A, page two, to realign funds per DYS recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Yeah, there was nothing. This is a long steamy grant. There's something on some, uh, funding on the side of it for better management within the courts.
Come on down. Heidi Delaney, come on down.
Oh, Kelly, can you turn that box on there? There's a toggle switch there.
Thank you. I'll test it.
That's better. Financials today include an appropriation transfer from the contingent pay account for a prepayment cost for the printing and mailing of tax invoices to the Treasurer's Office, and appropriation transfers and supplemental appropriations for the Juvenile Court Care and Custody Fund for the state fiscal year 2016 reclaim grant funding. Contract for Millstone Management Group for the entrance canopy replacement for the Board of DD Adult Services Building in the amount of $46,490. Travel request for the County Police Court, Community Development, the Engineers' Office, Department of Job and Family Services, and the Probate Court. Payments to Kent Mark's Home Improvements for Phase One and Two of the Thompson Township Community Center Rehabilitation Project for the Office of Community Mechanical Development totaling $56,578.20. Payments to Portman Electric Incorporated for the installation of heat cables at the Board of DD Transportation Facility in the amount of $36,799. Pay request number three for building technicians for the roof replacement project area for the DDD Administration and Adult Workshop Buildings in the amount of $130,052. Payments to Trappy Software Group for the annual software maintenance contract for the Transit Department in the amount of $23,727. The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number 15-133 itemizing the signing process for the meeting on September 22, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Well, I just came to say thank you formally to the Commissioner's Office for allowing Destination Giaga, the use of the Bell Building to fair. We had a fabulous reception there. We gave out so much more information because of our highly visible location and were able to debut our new passport program, and we just wanted to say formally thank you. It was interesting to see the amount of people that came into the building that asked me if the building was new because they'd never been in it before, but then all lit up at night because we kept the building open until 10:00. They were coming in, they were just in awe of this architecture of the building, so it really gave a nice glow to the building and a fresh perspective to a lot of our people that have not been in the building. So we really appreciate it and hope the partnership can continue.
You're welcome. I think I've spent your time, but a lot of value to the county and...
We went through a ton of literature, not only our visitor guides, but all of our member information, so it really helped a lot of our businesses in the county.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Good.
Great. On our pancake breakfast Saturday, and we're really nervous about the rain, hoping it was going to come in Friday night, maybe Saturday night, I just prayed, please hold off till 12:00. And at 1:54, it started raining. And we got everything, everything done, we flew 80 kids.
Awesome, wow.
Served over 300 for pancakes. It was a very cool day.
If you have that kind of power, I need your number for my next picnic, okay? Stay away until after.
No one would let me pick a day because usually when I pick it, it just pours. So other people pick the day, and I just pray we get it. You know, we needed the rain, we absolutely need the rain, and I just kind of prayed, you know, just hold it off until 12:00.
Did you guys have any surprise fly-ins, or...
Not really. I think everybody was a little bit leery of the weather, and this particular one was not sponsored by the airport itself, it was sponsored by the EAA group.
Okay, yep.
So there was a lot of cool home builds there. We have a tenant who has designed and built his own plane, which is very unique. I don't know if you've seen a Breezy or know what a Breezy is, but it's along that line, but not quite, and it is quite unique. It's got its airworthy certificate this year, and he's been just tinkering with it, but I think it's a possibility that at some point he might put it out as a kid or something.
And that was on s...
Saturday.
Saturday?
Saturday.
Did anybody hang around till Sunday?
Um, yeah.
I heard this weird noise overhead, you know, I'm in Hampden, which isn't that far from it, and I heard it almost sounded like an ultralight, and then I looked up there and it was a plane, it looked like a pusher with a canard wing in the front and a big wing in the back. Do you have some of those over there, or...
I didn't even have them there, but they could have had one of the other close by airports, some Concorde, could have had something flying around, Los Nation, and all weird.
Yeah, I mean, it was a, I mean, I won't say it's a weird plane, it's just not conventional like most people think of a plane, with a small wing out on the nose, and then back was just like a delta wing thing, and then from what I could see, it appeared that it was a prop pusher that made a weird...
We have a couple of prop pushers out there, but I can't say that we've got one that sounds like what you're describing.
Oh, okay. I get it, it made a weird noise.
Because he made it in the area, I'm trying to find it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there were these, flown it. He was only about five hours in when he had to put it out in the field, and so the EAA group brought it back and did some tinkering with it, and now it's operating really well. Today, we are here for a reimbursement request number seven on our last year's construction project with FAA that we're about to 90% draw on the project, and I think our next reimbursement would be also to close out report and get that one over with, start the new one. And December 1, it all starts again, we put our application or pre-application in on the 1st of December.
Jock County Airport Authority is requesting the board acknowledge and approve reimbursement of request number seven, FAA Project 3390054017, 2014, reconstruct Bayonne and Taxi Way in the amount of $2,860, $2,574 FAA portion, and $286 county local match.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
When's the glider season coming?
They usually break down the gliders by the first of November, and, you know, take the wings off and bring them inside.
You have to stow it over there. I'll try to get them for the season.
You should, it's been fun. They have a new glider, it's not brand new, but it was somebody else's, and they started leasing it when they had a glider go down, and now they've bought it, and it's pretty cool. It's called a Grove. Check that out.
I know, it's a good one.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. I think my cousin, she got her pilot's license when she turned 30. Your cousin was a huge help to us Saturday. She is beautiful. She basically runs our Young Eagles program for us, and the paperwork end, she comes in, gets everybody signed up and gets them going, and we had a ton of pilots to fly kids, and 80 kids in three hours is what we flew, and that was pretty cool. Yeah, she did care.
She's a great girl.
She did great.
Morning.
Good morning.
The first one is, oh, the first two are letters of commitment, which are the initial prior to signing all the legal documents, but they're for two Jaga County companies. One is Chef Electric, as they find a home of their own. Right now, they're leasing in Monville, so this will be a corporate headquarters by Mayfield Road Drive-In. So this will be the purchase of property and construction. That's for two 25, 15 years, and three and a half. And the second one is for the Patty Group. This is an existing company in Russell Township. Wow, there's two businesses in Russell Township, but they've been there for several years. Family business, it's time to transition, so this is to help the transition from father to sons, so they're buying the business, the real estate of it, and like Liberty Bank, so this will be for $193,000, 10 years at three and a half, so those are the letters of commitment, 11 and 12.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting for approval to execute the letter of commitment to Chef Electric Company Incorporated for the CBPG revolving loan fund, for the purchase of land and construction of a 17,000 square foot building located at 12069 Mayfield Road, Monson Township, in the amount of $225,000 for 15 years, 180 months at 3.5% interest. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute the letter of commitment to the Patty Group Incorporated for the CBPG revolving loan fund, for the purchase of land and buildings located at 15533 Chillicothe, Russell Township, in the amount of $193,000 for 10 years, 120 months at 3.5% interest.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool? Do you want to do the next one? So you, you'll have to abstain.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next one, for Great Lakes Outdoor Supply, for the revolving loan fund, at this date requires so many job creations per money line, and this is certifying that Great Lakes Outdoor Supply has fulfilled their job creation portion of the revolving loan fund law.
I guess let me just make a couple of questions, comments on that as far as the whole Great Lakes Outdoor Supply. This is, you know, one of the things that I, you know, can give kudos to Anita and Kelly and all of the community development as far as, you know, this was something that I did before I became a commissioner, but, you know, it's, as you see, a lot of these businesses that are coming forward all the time, you know, there's a lot of creation of jobs within the county, and this is a win-win situation because, you know, just like Great Lakes Outdoor Supply pays interest on the dollars there, and it's just smart business, and it's, and it makes sense for a business to utilize this because of the, if you were a smart business guy, you're going to approach the county, and if you have the financial, you know, credentials and the background to be able to hold that their procedures are more strict than most of the banks. So at the end of the day, it's a great way to support your county, and it's a great way to create jobs, and it's just, it's a win all the way, and, you know, and I think that you guys do a great job promoting it to businesses, just like, you know, I didn't know you before, you guys, you know, I was involved in the county and making the approach to grow business in the county, and it's really good, and I thank you.
Yeah, well, we can be kind of a headache to businesses because we do insist that they will do everything they said they were going to do, so we're kind of relentless, but the reward is there, so we're, and we're thrilled to work with businesses. We really can see the benefit as we move through everything. All right, the next one, can I just do?
Do you want to do the...
It's okay. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Office of Housing and Community Partnerships of High School Cities Community Development, law grant program, job certification summary for Great Lakes Outdoor Supply as they have fulfilled their operation portion of the revolving loan fund.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Abstain.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
The next one is a change order for the Burton American Legion Hall project, coming
to an end. They've done a great job. The veterans are absolutely thrilled, they're there every day watching them work.
It's a reality show for them.
It is, and the guys working there have really been great to the veterans who just want to sit around and watch and make sure everything, you know, is going well, and I'll get a phone call every day with an update from them, so it's been a really, really rewarding project for me as well. The bathrooms were in pretty bad shape, so this change order comes about because just a couple of different things. They had to redo the insulation, it had not a blowing, but like a pouring insulation, little tiny, itty-bitty...
Vermicula.
Yes, so when they took it out, it just all came out, so we had to replace that, and heater vents were just way too rusted and rotten to paint, so we had, we had money because the bid came in lower than the allowance, so we were able to do a change order and get all new vents instead of just painting over rusted, old, yucky ones. So, but yeah, it's been a great project. So this change order is for those two reasons and in the amount of $1,875.
And I don't normally, you know, have this much conversation at these meetings, but once again, I mean, on that, I have to give kudos. This was a situation where when we originally made, had this program come available, this program didn't qualify under the auspices of what their specifics were, and, you know, we basically went forward and supported the vets to be able to get this, and it was relentless as far as what they did to make sure that we got this money to come back into Giaga, and, you know, really, kudos to both of you, they did a great job, and that was, you know, it was, it was, it was pretty amazing to see that change around, so.
Well, Frank McBride did his job, too. He stepped up and really took a lot on, and...
I enjoy working with them.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, it was just, you know, just the typical, you know, vet syndrome that you don't ask for help, you know, so it was just one of those things where it was kind of neat, you know, that when I called you on that, and all of a sudden, you know, it was like, can't get this through, and something else then finds out.
Yeah, it's something to think, great doing it.
Yeah.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number one, increasing the contract with JAG Construction Services Incorporated for the Burton American Legion ADA Renovation under Grant EF 140181, due to changes in scope of work and to extend the contract date by 40 days, making the final date of completion October 13, 2015, in the amount of $1,875.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner O'Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spadeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Okay, and the last one is Great Lakes Growers, and these are the legal documents, we've
already done the letter of commitment, so this is just to secure our position and to allow the loan to be made. This is 250 for 10 years at 4%, with the notes of immigration, participation agreement, and the mortgage, as well as a pledge of key man insurance. So this is an agribusiness, it's an innovative product, it's sort of risky, but that's why we're so secured on it to cover every eventuality, but it certainly is what Giaga is about, is clean food, agriculture, supportive of the industry.
So on this one, Anita and I have been going back and forth, and so I'm going to ask the board for some input on this. You know, this is a little bit in the area of, this is how sausage is made, kind of a thing, I'm generally, these discussions need to be had in this board, okay? We can't make decisions behind closed doors, if there's questions or whatever, we need to have those questions put on the floor in this board, and so I need the board's advice on this, because I have a little angst over this particular one, and Anita knows why. We took a tour of the facility, we've been talking ad nauseam about the particulars on this, and here's the issues that I have with this particular loan, and I'm on the fence, I just don't know what the right thing to do is here. This is a very innovative business, as you said, great group of, a couple of guys that have started this business. The concern that I have is, number one, they're well-heeled guys, because you're not your average struggling entrepreneur. In addition to that, this is a very risky business. This is not nuts and bolts kind of a thing. They're out on the edge a little bit, and we're putting, you know, I've always had a little bit of issue with government being a bank, and I'm trying to get through that and trying to, in my own mind, but justify, I'm actually talking to banks right now about that, about that concept, but a government being a bank puts people's tax dollars at risk, and so I've always had a bit of an issue with governments risking dollars. I think Solindra, I think a lot of these, you know, big dollar government programs, you throw money into these things, and you never get any money back. You and I have talked about how Giaga is unique in that we care about getting our money back, where other companies throw money at these businesses and they don't get their money back, we talked about all that. So to the other two board members, it helped me to get through this in terms of the amount of risk associated with this, the need when we're taking money out of, this is not revolving loan fund dollars 100%, it is some revolving loan dollars, some money that we have in the bank specifically dedicated to this, but we're also taking money out of the general fund, which is monies that we might be needing before the end of the year for other things.
Which is, in the past years, has been 200,000, so this is only 100,000 that's going to come out.
So, I mean, I've got some concerns over there, so I'm asking the board, Anita and I have had this conversation back and forth, one day I'm in favor, one day I'm not in favor. So I'm going to throw that out to the board, help me to this, because I'm concerned about this particular loan. You know, we've just approved two others, I had no issue with them. Generally, conceptually, we pass a lot of these to for businesses and so forth, a big supporter of business in the county, when it's appropriate, when it's right, when we're not putting undue risk on the monies that we're loaning out. And so, you know, I will throw that out to the two of you, help me with this. What is your take on this?
I'll start off by saying this, I think that, I don't think that you should hold the situation where whether their personal financial situation is whether they can afford to just pay this off or not, once again, give back to my original statement, it's smart business, so at the end of the day, you know, that's just a good viable candidate for us to have, is being able to be liquid, to be able to do this project on their own, and I think that, you know, they're making a smart move to do this because they don't want to utilize their capital, you have your capital for other projects or other assistance within the, within the company, so as far as that, I feel even more comfortable doing this. Second of all, you know, I think that we've, you know, they've, tell you, we've pretty much kind of earmarked a certain amount of those dollars for these projects, and the biggest thing is this, we're creating jobs, you know, and I try to tell people less a lot of times, jobs are being created to, that bring back revenue into these townships and municipalities and villages and the county, and the biggest thing, too, is that, and a lot of this type of stuff, a traditional bank doesn't maybe want to entertain it just because of the fact that they just have, have their regulations, which are absolutely out of this world of ridiculousness, so...
Especially for a greenhouse.
Yeah, so, and that's the corruptiveness of risk in this, because this business is a very risky business.
It is, but we wouldn't do this.
This isn't an outdoor, you know, this isn't a Great Lakes outdoor, where you, you know, this is a common, known entity, you know, you can predict the future and so on and so forth, and so...
This would be difficult for somebody who's paycheck to paycheck, we wouldn't do it. You need to know that they can carry the working capital load, that they have cash because the business's greatest need is cash as they grow, and it's how they go out of business, if they don't have enough cash as they grow. If we can take care of their long-term debt with long-term payments, they can use the cash that they have to cover ongoing working expenses, which is really a big key to a business succeeding as it grows. If it's just sort of static, no, there's not that much need, but if it's growing, it needs a lot of disposable income, cash on hand, that they can put into the growth cycle, so...
And also, you know, they're continuing to grow, I mean, their profit and loss balance sheets are showing that they're just continuing to grow, they're receiving a lot of other, you know, accounts and...
Well, Frank McBride did his job too. He stepped up and really took a lot on.
I enjoy working with them.
Yeah, yeah. And it was, it was just, you know, just the typical, you know, vet syndrome that you don't ask for help, you know? So it was just one of those things where it was kind of neat, you know, that when I called you on that and all of a sudden, you know, it was like, I can't get this through and something else then.
Yeah. It's something to think great doing it.
Yeah.
The Office of Community Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President and the Board to execute change order number one, increasing the contract with JIC Construction Services Incorporated for the Burton American Legion ADA renovation under Grant EF 14-181, due to changes in scope of work and to extend the contract date by 40 days, making the final date of completion October 13th, 2015, in the amount of $1,875.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last one is Great Lakes Growers. And these are the legal documents. We've already done the letter of commitment. So this is just to secure our position and to allow the loan to be made. This is 250 for 10 years at 4% with the notes of immigration, participation agreement, and the mortgage as well as a pledge of human insurance. So this is an agribusiness. It's an innovative product. It's sort of risky, but that's why we're so secured on it to cover every eventuality. But it certainly is what Georgia is about, is clean food, agriculture, support of the industry.
So on this one, Anita and I have been going back and forth. And so I'm going to ask the Board for some input on this. This is a little bit in the area of this is how sausage is made, kind of a thing. Generally, these discussions need to be had in this Board.
Yes.
We can't make decisions behind closed doors. If there's questions or whatever, we need to have those questions put on the floor in this Board. And so I need the Board's advice on this because I have a little angst over this particular one. And Anita knows why. We took a tour of the facility. We've been talking ad nauseam about the particulars on this. And here's the issues that I have with this particular loan. And I'm on the fence. I just don't know what the right thing to do is here. This is a very innovative business, as you said. Great group of, a couple of guys that have started this business. The concern that I have is, number one, they're well-heeled guys because you're not your average struggling entrepreneur. In addition to that, this is a very risky business. This is not nuts and bolts kind of a thing. They're out on the edge a little bit. And we're putting, you know, I've always had a little bit of issue with government being a bank. And I'm trying to get through that and trying to, in my own mind, but justify, I'm actually talking to banks right now about that, about that concept. But a government being a bank puts people's tax dollars at risk. And so I've always had a bit of an issue with governments risking dollars. I think Solinda, I think a lot of these, you know, big dollar government programs, you throw money into these things and you never get any money back. You and I have talked about how Georgia is unique in that we care about getting our money back. Where other counties throw money at these businesses and they don't get their money back. We talked about all that. So to the other two Board members, it helped me to get through this in terms of the amount of risk associated with this. The need when we're taking money out of, this is not revolving loan fund dollars 100%. It is some revolving loan dollars, some money that we have in the bank specifically dedicated to this. But we're also taking money out of the general fund, which is monies that we might be needing before the end of the year for other things.
Which is, in the past years, has been 200,000. So this is only 100,000 that's going to come out.
So, I mean, I've got some concerns over this. So I'm asking the Board, Anita and I have had this conversation back and forth. One day I'm in favor, one day I'm not in favor. So I'm going to throw that out to the Board. Help me to this because I'm concerned about this particular loan. You know, we've just approved two others. I had no issue with them. Generally, conceptually, we pass a lot of these to for businesses and so forth. Big supporter of business in the county. When it's appropriate, when it's right, when we're not putting undue risk on the monies that we're loaning out. And so, you know, I will throw that out to the two of you. Help me with this. What is your take on this?
I'll start off by saying this. I think that, I don't think that you should hold the situation where whether their personal financial situation is whether they can afford to just pay this off or not. Once again, get back to my original statement, it's smart business. So at the end of the day, you know, that's just a good viable candidate for us to have as being able to be liquid, to be able to do this project on their own. And I think that, you know, they're making a smart move to do this because they don't want to utilize their capital. You have your capital for other projects or other assistance within the company. So as far as that, I feel even more comfortable doing this. Second of all, you know, I think that we've, you know, they've, tell you, we've pretty much kind of earmarked a certain amount of those dollars for these projects. And the biggest thing is this, we're creating jobs, you know, and I try to tell people less a lot of times. Jobs are being created to, that bring back revenue into these townships and municipalities and villages and the county. And the biggest thing too is, is that, and a lot of this type of stuff, a traditional bank doesn't maybe want to entertain it just because of the fact that they just have their regulations, which are absolutely out of this world of ridiculousness.
Especially for a greenhouse.
Yeah.
And that's the corruptiveness of risk in this. Because this business is a very risky business.
It is. But we wouldn't do this.
This isn't an, the Great Lakes outdoor where you, you know, this is a common, known entity, you know, you can predict the future and so on and so forth.
This would be difficult for somebody who's paycheck to paycheck. We wouldn't do it. You need to know that they can carry the working capital load, that they have cash because the business's greatest need is cash as they grow. And it's how they go out of business if they don't have enough cash as they grow. If we can take care of their long-term debt with long-term payments, they can use the cash that they have to cover ongoing working expenses, which is really a big key to a business succeeding as it grows. If it's just sort of static, no, there's not that much need. But if it's growing, it needs a lot of disposable income, cash on hand, that they can put into the growth cycle. So.
And also, you know, they're continuing to grow. I mean, their profit and loss balance sheets are showing that they're just continuing to grow. They're receiving a lot of other, you know, accounts and orders that they can't fulfill because of where they're at. And I just think that, you know, they've maximized where they're at right now and they're just continuing to grow. And I just think that it's kind of a neat concept that I think, if anything, I think this is the start of something that probably is going to go even beyond what they're at right now.
The whole coin.
Exactly. You know, and it's just, you know, and, you know, just knowing also the family background on that of how aggressive the businesses are with taking it from one step to the next to the next. I really am excited because I think that this will grow into something really good for Georgia. I think it's a good move. I really do. And, you know, if it was just a fly-by-night that just was kind of rolling the dice on this, I would say, maybe not. But in this situation, I feel comfortable to put my name on it.
I know both these guys. I've known them one this whole life. I know their families. I went on a tour of the place. I also saw a presentation that was done by them. I had a gel breakfast one time, a year or so ago. And I was in on this when you first started talking about it across the way. And my concern was the guarantee.
Yes.
Because it is a innovative business. It is, I mean, it's a good thing these guys are young. Because they work a heck of a lot of hours. I mean, you know, if a bug gets in that place, it could cause a problem. And they're, they've shown that they're starting to master all the little things that could go wrong and try to stay ahead of them. I have no problem at all voting to give them this loan for this project. I think it's a, I think it's another, let's say it's a technological first for Georgia County.
Yeah.
I mean, they do this in other parts of the country, but this thing's pretty fascinating. It's a hydroponic vegetable growing operation, for those of you in the audience, where they take a seed and germinate the seed. And from the seed to the time they harvest it, and they harvest them live, sell them in containers with the liquid still on the roots. And it's as fresh as you're going to get. And it's as safe and clean as you're going to get because it's not grown in, I don't know, E. coli or whatever. I'm not a farmer. But, I mean, it just grows in this water that they put a monitored amount of nutrients into. It's fascinating.
That's a science. This has been a journey for them as they've learned and perfected.
Because they're cutting edge. A lot of this technology, they're developing as they go. The racks, the troughs that they grow it in. A lot of that is proprietary design for them or by them, made for them. And it's a pretty fascinating endeavor. I don't, I don't feel, because of the guarantee, that it's really a risk to us if, you know, God forbid, the bottom falls out or something like that. They're guaranteeing the loan, but this, as Ralph said, allows them to do this expansion and leave that money for those unexpected events and contingencies that happen. They have cash on hand.
Yeah. It's crucial.
So I have no problem making a motion on number 15 once we read it.
The Office of Community Development is requesting the Board approve and execute the legal binding documents for the local revolving loan fund loan to Great Lakes Growers LLP in the amount of $250,000 for 10 years, 120 months at 4%. Including mortgage promissory note participation agreement, guarantee of Timothy Ryan, and guarantee of John Bonner.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Flay.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you put in on these things.
It's, we enjoy it. Or obviously, we wouldn't do it, but we really enjoy it. I mean, we, in other communities, they might have more trouble, but there's never been a business we talked to that wasn't like, why are you making us do it? I mean, they're, sometimes they can get a little annoyed if we keep bugging them, but they all are Georgia. I mean, they know what the end is. The end is Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Hello, May.
Good morning.
Is our salt ched filled?
It's getting there. Get the hood up. Yeah, it's almost, it's filling up. I think we got about eight or nine thousand running there right now, so. There's more on the way, so. The item that we have on the agenda today is approving the final change order on the drainage improvement project for Old State Road. This project actually started last year in 2014 and was suspended at the wintertime. Resume construction early spring, was finished in May 1. We were going back and forth on some numbers, but it comes in under the budget of about $7,000 plus or minus a few dollars.
The County Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one, final decreasing the contract with Neronian Funds Incorporated for the drainage improvements of Old State Road. CH is the exception to future H in Middleville and Parkland Township, $7,045 in the amount of 7%.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Flay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. I'm representing my son Trent Lutter.
Oh, we're out of order.
We're out of order. Water Resources has to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, no. No, it's fine. Morning, Laura.
This is for a 208 update in Chester Township. It's to amend the Chester Township 208 Order Quality Management Plan. It's changing the designation of a parcel that's already included in a sewer area. So it's going from no service to existing service. And that parcel is located at 8761 May Hill Grove. They're currently already receiving sewer service from us, so we're just kind of bringing it up to date.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve and amend the Chester Township 208 Water Quality Management Plan to change the designation of permanent parcel 11 Open 06 extending to the southern end of parcel number 11389304 from no service to existing service as requested by the Chester Township trustee.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Flay.
Aye.
Now, Donna. Yeah. It's all right. Got to be proud.
I'm here to thank the Commissioners on behalf of my son Trent Lutter and also our fellow Eagle Scout, Ian Necher. I understand that some of the substitutions that you have done for them. My son's been in scout since he's been seven years old. So 10 years for him and seven years or so for the other, you know, and the projects that my son had done for Fort Ed Fairgrounds. He is also a junior fair participant and he's been here after 12 years.
No, and thanks for coming here too. That's really nice. In three years, we've never had anybody actually present, so that's nice. Appreciate you coming in.
You have a lot to be proud of because your daughter just had it. Has she come down?
Uh, no. And my daughter has. Was voted Georgia County Fair Queen.
Wow.
So deep roots in 4H. Yes, yes, very much so.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-134 honoring Trent Colby Rutter for achieving Eagle Scout's highest award of advancement, St. Louis Fair Scout. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-135 honoring Ian Catcher Leger for achieving Eagle Scout's highest award of advancement, St. Louis Fair Scout.
I'll make both of those motions. Second.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Flay.
Aye.
Mr. Flay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, may have a court of honor to hold for them this Sunday, 27th, from 2 to 4. Everyone's in town hall if any of you are able to attend and present. It's 2 to 4.
His next action is, we do this every year following the budget, commissioning the tax budget to the County Auditor. Budget Commission reviews it and they determine the resources for the beginning of 2016. So this is the final step. And this also provides the basis under which you can do the permanent appropriation, as we generally do in December of every year. So that's specifically a step required so that the County Auditor has the certified documents to be able to continue to levy taxation duties.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-134 accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax duties and certifying them to the County Auditor.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Flay.
Come on down. Want to get this one?
I'm just wondering, how are you? But that's time of year again.
What's that, deer hunting season?
No tiger.
We're talking, no tiger season.
No tiger.
I'm here. It's fall tomorrow.
Oh, no, no.
I kind of like the deer season.
Is that where you pet the deer and not kill the deer, right?
Grill them a little bit of soy sauce.
Oh, don't even go there, please. No, not the, okay. All right, so it's that time of year again where we got our healthcare renewal rate from SEPCO. So that's what I'm here to present to you today are the healthcare dental renewals for 2016. Not too terrible, but not our best. We experienced our second highest renewal rate since we've been in SEPCO, which was a 13.2%. Our other, our highest was back in 2010. We experienced a 14.5%. The good news is that we are in the consortium. Had we not been in the consortium, we would have seen a 25% increase. So we have good years, we have bad years. And I think that's the beauty of being in the consortium, both for healthcare and for our workers' temp. I think it works beautifully for us. So that's the good news. Our running 12-month loss ratio was 110%, meaning they were paying a lot more than we were paying them. And of note is that they paid $590,000 over our cooling point of $125,000. And that's pretty substantial. Our accident prescription was extremely high. We had some very high prescriptions that are specialty prescriptions. People use them, but they really impacted our rates this year. So what we're proposing and what you have in front of you is what was in the budget did not allow for that entire 13%, 13.2% increase. So we're looking at increasing the employee contribution rates modestly. An 18% increase to the employees, which means that on a family plan, it was $92. It'll be $109. And these are right in front of you. For a single plan, it was 37. It'll be 44. These are not high increases. And according to my calculations, previously you had passed the StayWell Wellness Program. And in that program for next year, the employee would get $150 if they complete the program. So by doing that, an employee on a family plan was paying $1,104 per year. Now they will pay $1,308 per year, which is a difference of 204. So according to my fancy footwork, that only gives them a $56 increase. However, if they also include their spouse in that, they get an additional $150. So they're still not even realizing an increase for the healthcare year. And I would just like to say that in comparison to what other counties charge their employees, this is again, an extremely modest increase to the employee, and the first increase in 11 years. So just kind of want to put that out there. But as far as the county goes, the experience that we did receive, these are just, things happen in people's lives. That's why we have insurance. This is how it played out this year for us.
What we're able to do is maintain the same coverage level as the employees.
We are not, right.
We're not having to reduce the level of benefits.
We're not changing the plan.
By the employees kicking in a modest amount, you know, nothing changes, so they have some predictability in the healthcare expenses.
Right. And our dental plan did not increase at all. So we are working with SEPCO. We, you know, we want to try and look at where we could maybe not have as high of an increase for next year. Again, these high-cost claims, sometimes that's just how it is when people get sick. So that's what we experienced this year. I don't think it's too terrible. I want to also say that we were at initially, our increase was 15.75%, but we got rebased. And so again, being in the pool, brought that down to 13.2%. We were at the higher end of the parameters. I think the highest end of the parameters in SEPCO this year, which is very unusual for us. Last year, we had a 6.9% increase. The year before, a 6.8. The year before, 5.6. Negative 1% in 2012 was a wonderful year. 11 and 9.8%. So I think, again, this is the second highest that we've seen.
Kathy Anderson in the middle of signing more documents that I thought existed during the part of your presentation.
Okay.
You talked about the StayWell initiative and the cash back, cash reward, right?
Right, the cash reward. Yeah, it's an asset.
Yeah, right. And I just wanted to make it clear again that none of the three of us received anything for that. Us supporting that is strictly for the employees.
That's exactly.
And, but none of the elected officials are permitted to take or get involved in that program. We can still do the StayWell. We can still do the points and do the training and so on. We just do not get compensation for any of that.
That's exactly right. And a lot of our elected officials still choose to do the wellness program, so that's always.
Leadership by example.
It is leadership by example, knowing full well that they won't be getting that incentive. And again, the incentive for next year, as you had approved prior to this, is $150 if the employee completes it. It's also a little bit higher points that they will have to achieve. We're going to be doing our open enrollment meetings and explaining all of that. Open enrollment will be from October 5th through October 26th. At that time, employees can come and make any changes they want to make to the plan, put people on the plan, take people off of the plan. This is their opportunity during the year without having a qualifying event. This is when they can come and do this. We're going to be holding meetings on October 6th and 7th at various places in the county. Wendy Dillingham will be coming out. And we really want to explain to the employees again, our StayWell program and how much of a benefit it is to them financially, in particular because this year, StayWell and SEPCO are allowing a spouse to join in. It is not mandatory to get the wellness rate, but they can if they choose and they get an additional $150, which at the end of the year would be $300. That's for next year. Our wellness year is different than it used to be. It starts on October 1st and it runs through September 30th of next year so that everybody has that opportunity. It's, this year, it wasn't without its issues, but this was our transitional year. And hopefully, next year will be better because people will be more accustomed to doing it and be more effective too. They've made some changes that I think are more effective. So.
All right. Thank you. No questions, one comment. A lot of this, you see a lot of conversation around here. And like Anita, we are blessed in this county with some great employees. Kathy being one of them. So Anita and her whole team are fantastic. I'm calling people out. We've got three employees across a lot of our departments. And so, kudos to Kathy for working our way through some challenges that we had, so.
It cannot be more than 25% of what our cost is to provide that coverage. That we haven't, our costs have continued to increase, we haven't changed that waiver rate in a long time.
We haven't.
I mean, the, the business decision there is we're incentivizing people who have the ability to get covered somewhere else to do that, and that saves the county a lot of money, and it helps these employees out as well.
It does. And also of note, our dental rates, they haven't changed, and again, proposing that the employees, in the time that I've been here, have never contributed towards their dental plan. And again, this year, we're looking at no contributions from the employees.
For next year, we're going to be hooking ours up to the Italian connection? Yes. Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
The meds. The meds, yeah.
I like that a lot.
And I lost my bags, the airlines lost my bags on the way over to Italy, I just got back to Italy. And so I didn't have my medication, and I found out that I could just go to a pharmacy and buy them without a prescription. And the rate was enormously, well, much different, much lower in Italy than it was here. So we're going to have a connection there with, yeah.
And I'm hearing that, you know, prescription rates are just continually rising, you know, and that's part of the issue that's impacting our rates as well, is the increase overall in prescription drugs.
Kathy, it's an interesting market. You do a great job, so.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute SEPCO Giaga County Drug County Basic Plan 5A and the Hand Plan, summary benefits forms to be effective January 1st of 2016. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute SEPCO Giaga County Rate Renewal Assistance for 2016. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and accept the 2016 Giaga County SEPCO Delta Dental Renewal Plans and Rates and the County Contribution Rate to be effective January 1st, 2016. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and accept the 2016 Giaga County Employee Labor Rates to be effective January 1st, 2016.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Bligh.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. She's got one more.
It's definitely, I'm going to switch hats now. It's the same here.
Now, oh, the 125?
The 125 plan. Okay, all right, so the 125 plan, what you have before you is a checklist. We would like to do a new 125 plan. We looked at our previous 125 plan and decided there definitely needed to be some changes. We need to make some amendments in accordance with the Affordable Healthcare Law. And the 125 plan is basically part of the IRS code that allows employees to convert taxable cash benefit into non-taxable benefits. And under Section 125, they can choose to pay for their qualified benefit pre-tax before any taxes are deducted from the employee's paycheck. So it's a win-win for the employees. We are looking at making some changes to it, definitely updating it. And again, I think it's extremely necessary that we amend and just do a new 125 because the previous one was 1990, so we need to definitely update and get on course with that. So the cost of it is nominal, it's $395. We have Laura LaChapelle heavily involved in this, and she is looking at an organization called NEO, Administration out of Akron, that was recommended by SEPCO. I know she did check around here, not many people do 125 plans. So we're on base with that, but we had to do a checklist to see exactly how we wanted it to operate. So that's what you have before you is a checklist to give to NEO so that they can get going on the plan.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President and the Board to execute the NEO Administration section 125 plan setup and document checklist and agreement for services section 125 plan documentation services in the amount of $385.
Make that motion.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Bligh.
Mr. Bligh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President and the Board to execute the NEO Administration section 125 plan setup and document checklist and agreement for services section 125 plan documentation services in the amount of $385.
Make that motion.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Bligh.
Mr. Bligh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board cancel session for Thursday, September 24, 2016.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Bligh. Mr. Bligh.
Dave, do you want to come in and add the next one?
Well, or the budget hearing schedule. This is, I think, just reflects the changes that are happening today. They were able to move up the prosecutor earlier in the day, so they'll have to run sooner. I don't think there's any other, oh, the Board of Elections got moved in.
Board of Elections got moved to 2:00 today, and prosecutors got moved up, and then the Don Warden got moved to
29.
The 29, 315. Those are the only changes that have been made.
And then again, Ralph, if you have, you'd said you have some times you can't meet, so we just need to know what that is and we'll reschedule.
Okay. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve the amended 2015 budget hearing schedule.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Bligh.
Mr. Bligh.
If anyone has any interest in schedules.
Okay, with that, there's no more agenda items. Meetings that you might be interested in attending, the budget hearings, which are being scheduled, as I said, in the room. A NACCO meeting, and your meeting is going to be 9/23, regular session, has been canceled on the 25th. Community Improvement Corporation Economic Breakfast, it's going to be the 25th. Board Revision Meeting is going to be the 28th. Budget Hearing on the 29th. Investment Advisory Board Meeting on the 29th. Commissioner's Regular Session on the 29th. More Budget Hearings on the 6th. We will hold regular session on the 9th. NOAC has got an External Affairs Policy and Planning and Programming meeting. And the 12th is going to be closed due to Columbus Day.
All right, so move to adjourn.
Second.